All right, I'd like to open the Board of Selectmen meeting for 9:00 AM on November 22nd. Could I have a roll call, please?
Josh Shank present.
Chad Sexton Duranian present.
Veronica Calpessence. The meeting is being taped recorded. It will be posted on YouTube after the fact. It is not live on Channel 9 this morning. Chairman's additions or additions? I have none. Does anybody else have any additions or additions to today's agenda? All right, our first item of business is a 9:00 AM executive session. It's now 9:07, so we're a little bit late. But we are going to be leaving this meeting, and we will come back to it at approximately 10 o'clock. So if you are in the waiting room, you may check back in around that time. Thank you very much.
So Madam Chair, I make a motion that we enter into executive session pursuant to General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation of an open meeting, or if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body, and the chair so declares. This is in regards to Eaton versus Townsend, Gerard versus Townsend, Merrill versus Townsend, and Clark versus Townsend, and return to open session afterwards.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Josh Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Calpessence, yes. All right, thank you very much, everybody. And we will see you back around 10 o'clock. So, welcome back, everybody. We're moving to Section 3.1, Appointments of Officials. So is there a motion to appoint Gregory Smith to the Council on Aging Assistant, as the Council on Aging Assistant Program Coordinator pending a successful query, a medical exam, and subject to the six-month probationary period?
I move that we appoint Gregory Smith to the Council on Aging Assistant Program Coordinator pending successful query, medical exam, and six-month probationary period.
Second.
Any discussion?
What is the pay rate?
I should know that off the top of my head. I think it's a C1, is that true?
It was 14 something dollars.
I don't know if that's right.
I just think we should have that number attached to it.
15-hour per week position. And it does not say. I'm pretty, it's a C something. For the Assistant Program. Not in the posting.
Do we need it, or can we move on? I think we should have it, but... Anybody out there that is involved this?
No.
No.
You don't see it in the posting either?
No.
C1, 17 million.
Yeah.
B1, Bravo 1.
B1.
14, 36.
14 what?
14, 30.
14, 30. Thank you.
All right, any other questions, any other discussion? All right, so we've confirmed that it's a B1 on the pay scale. All those in favor of the appointment?
Josh Shank, yes. Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Calpessence, yes. All right, the next one is to vote and sign the special town meeting warrant. Get a copy of that.
Yes.
I think it is filed, except for some descriptions I'd like to put in for the water department. If that's okay. The page design still says draft.
I wanted to look and see how we did the the unregistered migrant vehicle.
Put in the changes the town council had proposed. I was hoping that I could get the descriptions put in this morning, but not. I could print out a clean signature page. I'll be moving to draft. You can sign that, and I'll just fill in the descriptions.
Okay.
As soon as I get the
The dollar amounts looked what I expected.
Yes.
So...
Dollar amounts, I took out the separate listing for the acting chief, because that was based on your conversation with DLS.
Right.
Not to add line items that weren't in the original warrant.
Right.
So the increase for town administrators is all rolled into that first line. And the increase for the acting chief is all rolled into the fire chief salary line item, instead of creating a separate line item.
All right, is there a motion to vote and sign the special town meeting warrant?
I move that we sign the special town meeting warrant as presented.
Second.
With
Addition of
Addition of descriptions for
Water Department.
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, any other discussion?
And I'll have a signage off sheet before you leave.
Okay.
That's second due?
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Josh Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Calpessence, yes.
Done, good, move on.
Oh, yes, have they, please, yes.
So, the last day to register to vote, if you are not a registered voter in the town of Townsend, is Friday, December 3rd, 2021, from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM, which will need to have the doors unlocked on that date till 8:00 PM. So if you want to vote at the special town meeting, that's the last day you can register to vote, if you are not a registered voter in town.
Thank you.
Okay, and once we get the warrant, we will put it up on the website. I already have a place there, and it's on the front page. So if anybody's interested, these dates on Okay, so that's Nice Thanksgiving if I don't want to.
Good, thank you.
Thanks.
All right. All right. 4.1, moving on to 4.2, sign the memorandum of understanding with Patriot, RECC Dispatch contingent on successful separation from Nishoba. Is there a motion?
I move that we sign the memorandum of understanding with Patriot, RECC Dispatch, contingent on successful separation from Nishoba.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, open for discussion. Chief, is there anything that you want to say on this? I'll go to you first.
No, not particularly. I just would like to comment on the financial responsibility section. It does look like it's timed properly so that we will know of the assessment prior to us putting together our budget for the following fiscal year. There is a section in there that details the allocation of costs, in portioning of costs. I trust the board has reviewed that and is satisfied with that. Otherwise, I'm just here for if you have any questions.
Has there been any talk about this, Chief, with anybody?
Regarding, I'm not sure what you mean, Joe.
Yeah, has anybody had any concerns that you've been notified, or anybody concerned to what we're doing in regards to this?
Sure, I spoke with Ms. Lizio. She raised some concerns, but they were with the board about process. Agreed to meet with her and work with her through her responsibilities with FinCom to develop another fiscal budget for '23, which, as we've talked about before, will be a bit challenging as we kind of get all in front of all the front-loaded costs and that type of thing.
Okay, so she's confronting you as a finance committee member?
I wouldn't necessarily define it as a confrontation, Mr. Shank, but she did raise some concerns. I directed it to the board if she had concerns with the process and explained what I had done up till this point and actually requested that she assist me in building the fiscal '23 budget with her responsibilities as a FinCom member.
Any further discussion?
Good.
Ross, do you have anything?
No.
All right. So, all those in favor?
Josh Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Calpessence, yes. So we will sign that MOU and get it where it needs to be.
Excellent, I'll get cracking with working with council to get that letter of separation crafted and make sure we're adhering to the timelines presented in the MOU for us with Nishoba. I'll get on that right away, times of the
That's on 4.3. So do we need a motion to send a separation notice to Nishoba Valley Regional Dispatch Center and for the town to work with council to prepare that?
For Jay and Town Council to prepare the letter?
For Jay and Town Council.
Didn't we do that last time?
No, we did not vote on it.
Then I move to send, to ask the chief work with town council to send a separation letter to Nishoba Valley Regional Dispatch Center in regards to the separation.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right, any further discussion?
Well, I think we ought to have a little discussion here, just to enlighten the general public what we're doing, because there's some talk out there that, you know, nobody knows what's happening. But I think it's very important that everybody in the community know and understand that what we're working on to move forward is we're moving out in Nishoba Regional Dispatch, which I believe has seven communities that are involved that have no real connection to the town of Townsend, to move in into Pepperell, which is Patriot, which would be part of our regional dispatch, which would be Ashby, Townsend, and Pepperell. We're a regional school, regional district. So by far, it will be better for the community. It'll be, as far as I am concerned, safer for the public safety aspect, police and fire, going to a smaller dispatch center. It'll be a little more personable. It will feel like what we had prior when we had our own dispatch center. So I hope that we've made the right decision for the community.
Now, Chief, you've been working on this for a while. About how long has this been?
Sure, it's a culmination of about probably almost three years of meetings, to be honest. We had a communications, regional communications committee was formed probably about three years ago. The first part of it was discussing whether or not it was feasible for the three towns to join. A study was commissioned. I can't remember the cost, some $25,000 study along those lines. We got grant funded to determine feasibility. That came back that it was feasible. There were a few different suggestions within it. Pepperell and Ashby had since joined, and they have a rec now as on the heels of that survey or of the heels of that feasibility study. We were commissioned again by the Board of Selectmen, meaning Fire Chief, me, and Captain Grimley, again to serve as Regional Communications Committee to determine whether or not we would recommend or should look into joining what was now formed as Patriot Rec. We made a recommendation on March 30th that we did feel as though that was in the best interest of public safety for the town of Townsend. The issue was taken up on 4/6, April 6th, in an executive session. And the reason that was handled that way is there were some contract negotiations to take place with Patriot and the termination of service with Nishoba. The board felt as though those were non-public, and obviously you don't want to tip your hands in contract negotiations. It was handled April 6th. Since then, we've kind of sharpened the pencil, tried to identify our funding sources and our position now to put the walls in place to start working. The timeline is we need to notice them by January for separation for the following fiscal year. So a January notice for a July separation. We seem to be adhering to that timeline fairly well. But if you see me being a little edgy, it's because as soon as I get off this Zoom call, I'm going to get it right in motion, because there's zero time to waste. It's a very complex project, as we had talked about. This is a difficult issue with a lot of moving parts, and the sooner I can get cracking at it, the better, frankly.
Good, and thank you for that outline, because I want to make sure that we are very clear that we have been working on this for a long time. I know that it's something that when I first joined the board, that's we had discussions on moving forward from the feasibility study, from all the work that you've done. So, Chief, I want to thank you and all involved for all the work that you've done and whatever you need from me to move this forward as quickly as possible. Just let me know.
You're very welcome, sir. Yeah, three years of public meetings, mostly at the firehouse. Not overly regular, but probably more than once a quarter for that period of time, probably 20 or so meetings. So, yeah, a pretty significant amount of work went into this. Thank you very much for the acknowledgement.
All right, could we have a vote? All those in favor of the chief and town council working on separation notice and getting it over to Nishoba Valley Dispatch?
Josh Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Calpessence, yes. All right, thank you very much. Moving on to Section 4.4.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you. Review and approve on sign of road opening permit. I think this is for 21 to 23 Apple Drive for Unitel. So is there a motion?
I move that we sign a road opening permit regarding Unitel gas service upgrade to 21 to 23 Apple Drive.
Second.
Any discussion? All right, all those in favor?
Josh Shank, yes.
Chad Sexton Duranian, yes.
Veronica Calpessence, yes. All right. That brings us down to 5.1, the ARPA project. So Jennifer Thompson has joined us for this part of the discussion. She's our Capital Strategic Solutions Consultant for the ARPA project. Previously, she had worked with us on the CARES Act reconciliations that needed to be done. So, welcome, Jennifer. We're glad you could join us. Sorry, it is so late.
No, good morning. No problem at all.
But here we are. So if you haven't received, I know I signed it last week and put the little note in for up to $10,000, and then we'll just keep renewing as we need to going forward. I hope that's okay with you.
That's perfectly fine.
Okay, and I did email you. I don't think Joe and Chad know, but Ross may, if he's checked his emails this morning, to go ahead and do the computation for the revenue decrease calculation.
Yes.
Under ARPA, just so we have that number and can add that to one of the projects, if that's what we choose, if we choose to go forward.
Makes sense.
So what I had done is the ARPA project's possibilities. I took everything that's on the whiteboards or anything that anybody had sent to me, and I incorporated into this. So these are the asks. There's one separate one, which is for a nonprofit organization, and that's for the Why does that keep going away? Are we up? Yes. Our screen keeps going in and out here, for whatever reason. So I had compiled them and the ARPA project's possibilities. The one for the nonprofit was for Squanaco Greenways, for the support for the sidewalks at the harbor, for the rail trail to go, to have sidewalk for the rail trail support, for the extension from one side of that intersection to the other. The state had recommended not to put the crossing down from the bridge. That it was better to do it at the traffic light, even though the rail trail goes across at the bridge. So, anyway. So what I wanted to do was look at the projects that we have, talk about how we're going to apportion it, and how, I took out the slide, considerations in project selection from what you presented to us last time, because I think we need to decide, as the Board of Selectmen, how we're going to determine which of these projects to go with. So, and I do have some questions about the viability of some of these projects. So, this is crazy. How do you guys want to go forward? If I say this is crazy, it's because of the in and out of the, I think it's a bad connection somewhere. For us, what we see on the screen goes in and out, and we can't always see.
I think it might be here.
Hang on one minute. All right, so Jennifer, what would be the best way for you for us to proceed? What would be a good way for us to go forward with looking at these?
So, we can do it one of two ways. We can talk about priorities for this, you know, select board and how they want to prioritize the projects. But maybe that means going through them. Once again, I think the last time we went through them wasn't quite as comprehensive as what you sent out. So we can go through project by project, if you want to do it that way. And select one members can weigh in. Ours, we're going through, or we can wait till the end. It's up to you.
I have an idea of how I want to look at the funds for that. So this is the way I see it. Over the course of time, we have 2.8 million. So I'm taking 100K out and setting it aside. That's for consultant fees, and just hold that off. So I look at it as 2.7 million, and I split it into thirds. So I say we have 900K, 900K, and 900K. So because there are these different categories, and I call them public safety and COVID, community support, decreased revenue, infrastructure. I see two-thirds going towards infrastructure. I attended, it was a Mass Regional Planning Commission Conference last week Wednesday morning, I believe it was. It was really good, but they haven't put up the slides or anything yet on the website. When they do, I'll share it with everybody. But they said that this was an opportunity to do projects that fit into these categories that you wouldn't, that you really, your community really wants to do. This is an opportunity to get those projects done. So one way to look at it is that way. So I went two-thirds infrastructure, so that's heavyweight on category four, and one-third, 900K for everything else. But what I didn't know is, can we, today, we only have 1.4 million in hand. We don't have the other 1.4 million yet. Can we look at our projects as a total and spend out the whole 2.8? Or do we have to wait until we actually have those funds in hand? Because that makes a difference in how we select our projects. Yeah, it's kind of like someone's running a table saw out in the barn and it's pulling out the electricity, and everything's dimming. Anyway, we're having electrical, interesting electrical issues here. Anyway, so that's how I see it, kind of. But can we allocate the whole amount now?
On the back?
Or or do we have to wait, just allocate as What was that?
I have no idea.
Because on the big screen, you watch the big screen. It just will go black.
Yeah. I don't know, there's no
You go to Hartley's box and just mute him.
Yeah. They're watching, and you just all, all computer, and everything goes black.
I
That's the filming one, the way, Hartley?
No, this is coming through fine, the Zoom is coming through fine.
Hartley, could you mute yourself so we can't hear this? So we can get to your conversation here?
You tell him to mute himself.
I can't mute him. Maybe because he's the host.
Oh, sorry.
All right. So Hartley, so Jennifer, what, how does that work?
So, so there's two differences. One is the allocation, which is what you talked about. So whether or not you decide and determine how you want to spend that money. And you can do, you can decide how you want to allocate the full 2.8 million. Whether or not you spend what you don't have in terms of the second half of the money really depends on your, you know, your town's financial situation, because, you know, it's a cash flow issue. So that's a conversation, you know, for Ross and Terry to probably look at. I don't know your cash flow and your internal capacity to expend money before it comes in. Really, I mean, some towns have that capacity and some towns don't. Because, you know, so there's two different issues. One, you can certainly allocate it. You can decide which projects you're going to spend the full 2.8 on. But if you're asking whether or not you could spend it, that depends on the financial condition of the town. I just don't know enough about standing.
That answers the question. I would then hesitate to spend beyond what we have allocated. And it's only July or August.
Well, beyond what's allocated and beyond what's received. Right?
Right.
Right, so we've received the 1.4. We'll receive the other 1.4 in the July, August timeframe, I believe.
You know, the other unknown that a lot of communities are wrestling with is, I think a lot of communities want to use the bulk of it for infrastructure. But now with the infrastructure bill coming out, everyone's kind of waiting to see what that's going to look like. And does that change how much you want to spend out of ARPA? Because now you know you're getting this, you know, second piece of energy infrastructure.
One of the big projects that we have, so if you look at the categories under infrastructure, it's the second one, the Greenville Bridge. We, that was bid out last spring. The bids were opened after town meeting. And it is a project that needs to be done. But if we're getting funds for roads and bridges through the infrastructure bill, whether it's the state coming in with funds or the federal bill that was a couple weeks ago signed, I would want to perhaps rebid that project, get a more accurate cost, and hope, before we put it on here, that we get funds through the infrastructure bills to cover that. Because my understanding is there will be highway and bridge funds coming in one of those. Either additional ARPA state funds or the federal bill that was just signed. So although I think that's a priority project, the question becomes, do we name it now?
Are you taking comments on that?
Yeah, I'll take comments on that. Go ahead, Chad.
I guess firstly on that, I don't understand how a project can be bid out when funding hasn't been put in place for a project, number one. So we have gotten bids for a project that we haven't, that we didn't know where the funding was coming from. So I believe So I believe that the process was, was very poor governance in that particular timeframe. So I, I agree with you. I think we should rebid the Greenville Bridge project. That would only put, number one, it would allow us the opportunity to have some financial forecasting. Put in place as to what we feel that we might need to do before we even go out to bid. You know, I mean, I can walk into a store and look at something that I want to buy for a lot of money and say that I'm going to buy it. But it's not until I have the money in my bank account that I can go out and buy it. And that's, you know, that's why I'm saying it just, the process that was involved just probably was not appropriate.
I mean, they bid, they put it out the bid before we even knew we had the money. And you know, the bids kept coming in higher, higher and higher. I think we need to, I agree with you a hundred percent. Put this whole project back out to bid and then let's see what the government or the state's going to give us in that infrastructure bill. And you know, let's use the ARPA funds for what we need, other than putting that amount of money into the bridge. And if we can do something more important for the community with that money, I think that's where we need to go.
Okay. So can we back up a little bit?
Sure.
And talk about how we make the decision. How do you guys see the money? I said, how I saw the money. How do you guys see that $2.8 million windfall for projects? Any, any different thoughts from mine?
I would like to see us each go through what we have earmarked here to, to set a priority. Put it in priority and each one of us have, you know, come forth with what are, what we feel our priorities are. And come up with a punch list of exactly what we feel is the most important.
Cal?
I, I agree. I mean, the biggest thing we have to look at here with this money is how. Are we, the board of selectmen, going to best spend this money to benefit the community? And the residents of the town. For me, I mean, we could put a lot of money into one thing that only one person or one little group may benefit. But I don't think that's how we should handle this. We should really, I agree with you. We should look at it. Pick our top two or three out of each one of these next meeting we have, say this is where we think we want to go. But it's the most important is to spend this money that's going to benefit the community, not just selected groups.
Well, we, we have three different perspectives here. You know, I come from more of a housing background, a human services background. I mean, you're coming from, from a lot of, you know, each one of us has our, our expertise. And so I believe that if we put down what we think is, think is the biggest bang for our buck, I think is, it's how we should do it.
Okay. So I'm, I'm good with that. I, so what we'll do is we can each go through this. We don't have to do the, do we want to do this right now or do we want to? Do you, have you done that already? Cause I swear to have. But I've looked at it as a third, a third, a third.
Right.
That's how I approached it and I heavily weighted infrastructure. And I did that because of the Greenville Bridge without, and, and now that everything that's happened in the past two weeks. What Jennifer says is exactly right. Waiting to see what comes out with infrastructure. As far as bridges, roads goes.
Yes.
Water, I think water is still a biggie for, I think water is still a concentration for ARPA. I, I would put water there, but there are community supports and public safety and COVID things that I would also like. Put that and I'm also, I think we, I'm saying what I think. I, I think there should be seed money for affordable housing in this somehow. That's something that we've been working towards in the past year, even with. Even funds to transfer the properties to the Affordable Housing Trust. Jennifer, here's a question for you. The Affordable Housing Trust, is that, is that dealt with as if it's a town? Would the town account for any funds that go to the trust? Or would that be viewed as a nonprofit? How is an Affordable Housing Trust viewed under the ARPA reporting structure?
So I, I believe I have to look at how your trust is set up, but I believe it's similar to how you did it with CARES. So CARES, you, you treated it as a transfer, right? You actually paid them, or actually you paid them as a vendor though in your CARES, right?
Well, because we had, it wasn't the trust, it was Central Mass Housing Authority, I think.
Yeah.
That, that did that for us. They were our. They were the company that, so we paid them when they said, okay, we have someone qualified. Here you go. They qualified the payments.
It's a third party provider.
Correct.
Right. Where in this case, what you're talking about under ARPA is actually giving money to the, to the trust. Right? Not paying it outside, not a third party, right? So I think that would be more of a transfer, depending on how your trust is set up.
And then the Affordable Housing Trust would then do the reporting for any funds that were transferred to them.
Right.
Okay. That I wasn't sure of. So.
You know, before, obviously before you transfer the funds, they need to, you need to document what it's going to be used for. Just like you would for any other, anyone else you're going, you know, if you decide you want to give money to a nonprofit. You have to document ahead of time what that, what the intent of the funds is for. And that's all they're allowed to spend it on.
So would we need to come up with X amount of dollars? And then they need to report back to us on how they're going to, to allocate that and then we make a decision on it.
Yes, absolutely.
All right. There are, there are, just moving a little bit away. There are several of the items in this list that don't have a dollar amount associated with them. Some of the departments gave us dollar amounts and others did not. So in the same vein, even though it's departments within the town. Should, should we be going back to each of these department heads that submitted proposals? And saying, what do you expect cost wise that this will be?
Yes, in my opinion, yes, for two reasons. One, you're, you're gonna, you know, all three of you are going to look at the projects and then prioritize which ones you think should be completed. But it's hard to do that when you don't know how much all of them cost, right? You know, I, if they come in under 2.8 million, it might be an easier decision for you than if they come in at, you know, four million. So yes, and then the second reason is when we, when we expend the funds, we have to set them up on a project basis. So we need to have a general idea of how much is going to go into each. You set them up by project versus CARES Act, all the money was in one place. The way we have to set it up from, and from an accounting standpoint is project by project. So you, you need to have an estimate of what those are going to be.
So, and there at that seminar last week, Wednesday, there, there was a man from A and S. At the state, he started with a P. I can't remember his last name. And he had the best recording thing that I have seen as far as setting it up by projects and then underneath each. And I really want these slides and I'll get those for our next meeting, you know, between now and then, soon as they get posted. But it, the project description and the amount that we're going to associate with each.
So if we're going to be reaching back out to the department heads for dollar figures. I would also like them to put a timeline on it.
Good point.
I think that needs to be. And if they're going to put a timeline on it, we need to know the, the, I'd like to know the acuity of each as well. How, well, sorry, medical term, how important it is to have it done immediately. And I'm only asking that because I know certain water projects need to follow a certain. Pattern of construction. So we need to know what is first, what is second, what is third, even though the dollar amount might be different and we can allocate it. We need to see what, exactly how that fits into the bigger picture.
Okay, I, I can do that. So what I'm hearing is that as far as tasks for us go. It's we go through the list, we itemize what we think is what, what is most. We put ones on maybe three or four of them. We put twos on three or four, but we put threes. What are the most important? What are the next most important? What are the next? And we can reach out to the department heads and ask them for a dollar amount, timeline and immediacy. Or importance of the project or if there is some sort of dependency, one on the other.
Correct.
Or the. Okay.
I'm sorry. Can I just, can I just add one thing? So I think that's a really good point in terms of the timeline. And just to keep in mind, especially with the infrastructure projects, if they're assigning a dollar figure. Say it's something that they're not going to, you know, they still need to be designed and it's not going to be constructed until 2023, for example. Just to make sure when they set the pricing for that, that they include that escalator. Cause pricing in 2023, I'm sure is going to be a lot different than it is right now, just by what we've seen. And you know, I will just say this about the timeline too, because I think it's important. Is I know we all think we have a lot of time to spend this money, which we do. But also just keep in the back of your minds, especially with the infrastructure. That all cities and towns are going to be doing this at the same time. So you, you are going to see some lag times with your engineering firms and with your construction firms. And with the supply chain issue. So things are definitely going to take longer than they normally take. So I just think, you know, having that timeline is important to, you have some, some wiggle room to make sure that you're getting everything done by 2024.
Anything else Jennifer that we should be considering?
I think, I think that's the most important thing. You know, and, and you know, me saying put an escalator on it is, is easy for me to say. I know that's a difficult. But I, I'm sure your water department likely has an engineering firm that can give you some sense of, of what those numbers look like. At least a fairly good estimate.
Actually, the water department is the one department that did give us dollars on all of their projects.
And he does have a timeline.
And he does have a timeline on all of them. So there's a pretty good master plan on that one.
So I would just, I would just double check with him that the, on the timeline, the ones that he has further out. It's not pricing based on today, that it's pricing based on what it will be when you go out to bid and construct it in that timeline. It probably is, I'm, I'm assuming if it's done that specifically, but it's just a good idea to check because the numbers really do climb up just in a year.
That, that is the absolute case with the Greenville Road project.
I am sure, I'm sure, I don't know when you bid it, but I'm sure when you rebid it, it's going to be at a higher price, which. It's important that you do rebid it because you need to know how much it's going, it's going to actually.
Right. Because I'm, I have a feeling that with contingencies, it's going to be a lot higher than we expected. So I'd rather rebid.
They had also told me that if we chose, not told me, but it was one of the things that was discussed. I'm going out my A and F notes, that you can blend and break recovery funds. So they said, if you start a project under ARPA, if I understood correctly, if you start it under ARPA. And then these other funds come in, you can pull them into the project. It's not like, once you start with ARPA funds, that you have to stay with ARPA funds. The, the questionable thing, so that's, that's a good thing to know. For that bridge project, the questionable thing is, does it fit under the interim rule? And the interim rule could change a million times because they don't have a definite rule for how you spend the ARPA funds yet. But it has to be water, sewer or broadband. And this is a road project. It's stuff that we can put in, you know, space to run water out there at some point. That would be a possibility. And so then would it fit under the definition of water? With this being support for that road, a road project or a bridge project can only be done if it supports a water project. So if, if in fact, we do wind up designating ARPA funds for that. How do we term it in terms of project? Do we term it as a water project?
Right.
I think we would have to. So thoughts on that Jennifer?
So I, I had the same question on your bridge project and I, I only saw, I think, a brief paragraph on it. So I don't know that the details of it, but I did see that it does involve a water main extension. So you'd have to look at it and make sure that it's applicable. So say it's, it would, it would be something that would have normally been funded through the drinking, you know, the EPA's drinking water or. Clean Water Act. And, and we can kind of take a look at that for you if I get a little bit more information on it. But you're absolutely right. If you want to fund it through ARPA, the main premise of it needs to be the water main extension. And then the bridge is just a component of that, not vice versa. So that, that's, that could be a little bit tricky. I'd have to look at the project a little bit more to let you know. But it may be something that you end up doing through the infrastructure bill.
Right. So if you look at underwater department asks, number four and five. So this is the second from the last page in what I gave you. You know, the Mason Road, Greenville Road, Water Main Extension to the Mason Brook Bridge. And then this is farther out, upgrade the water line. But this, this bridge is even farther out than that. So it's a futures thing, but it is a bridge that need, a culvert that needs replaced. Over that stream, Walker Brook, I think it is. It's the Walker Brook. Am I right on that?
I think so, yeah.
It's the Walker Brook Bridge. So it's farther out, going out of town than even the Mason Road Bridge. So it would be support for the future as opposed to immediate. So anyway.
I have a general question, if I may.
I'm sure.
Jennifer, if the, if the town had approved a, a project that they wanted to fund pre-COVID. And because of COVID, the funding was not put into this particular project. On, are we able to use the ARPA funds to re-energize that particular thing?
It, it depends on the project. So, so there's a very, very specific piece that applies to staff. So if you have staff that was budgeted pre-pandemic and then you had to cut it because of, I think you had a position like that, right? Was your human services position like that? It was funded through board of selectmen. So that was funded before the pandemic, but then you had to cut it in the budget in fiscal year 20. Because of the pandemic, assumingly, that, that would be eligible. But on a project basis, it really depends on the project, unless you're going to use that kind of general revenue category. If you had a revenue loss and you would have funded things through the general revenue, then you can put it in that category. So it depends.
If it's what I, yeah, if it's what I think you're talking about, it's under decreased revenue and I also put it under infrastructure.
Yes.
Because depending on how our decreased revenue comes out, it would fit, I believe, under that.
Pavement management plan is what I'm talking.
Oh, the pavement management plan. Yeah. I don't know about that.
That would have to likely be under the, the revenue.
Decreased.
Decreased revenue, because we were supposed to be funding that through. Excise tax, I believe. And because of the, the way the financial situation of the town was, it never was appropriate or it was never funded that way. So I'd like to re-energize that program for the pavement managing plan for the town, if we can.
So I would say that's definitely, it would go under the revenue category. And I would say it's certainly something you should consider looking at because I think there's going to be a lot of road money that comes through that infrastructure bill. So if you have your, you know, pavement management index done and you know, the condition of all your roads, it's going to help, it's going to help you make those decisions. In terms of how to spend that money and where to spend it. You know, I don't know if you've ever seen those or if you've ever done them before, but it does kind of give you that roadmap. You know, to what, to what needs to be done and it clearly highlights which roads need to be lost.
Yeah.
And probably a little old.
It's a little, yeah, it's a little stale, but I think we can refresh it. A little bit of Febreeze should do.
I think you're, you're going to want that when you get to the point of deciding how you spend your infrastructure funds.
Yep.
All right. So I get, I guess our task then is to go prioritize each of these. I'll see that the department heads are reached out to, to get the timeline and dollar amount. And I'm adding pavement management plan under decreased revenue. I was also thinking of the Comcast build out for decreased revenue. It's on here.
Right. It's a. Right. It's, it's on in a couple of categories, but yeah.
So I'm the human resources, human services position I put under a couple of categories because I didn't know. So the other thing, of course, this is my, my pet thing is open space, outdoor spaces. They talked a lot about, about that as being fundable for, through ARPA funds. Like improvement, you know, things that we had wanted to do on this field out back, improvements to trails and things like that, that are possible under ARPA.
So could we fund that fitness program out of that?
Well, I have some comments on that, but first let's let Jennifer.
Yeah, let's, so what we can do, we can go through these one by one. What else is on our agenda today?
We have to accept funds for recycling.
And the holiday.
And the holiday schedule.
Okay, so that's just, um, I know this is 12 o'clock. All right. So what else should we be considering, Jennifer, before we let you go and start talking amongst ourselves?
I just had a question on the broadband one. I just had a few questions when I went through the list. So the broadband, the Comcast build that, that you were just talking about, and you have it in two different categories. Does that provide service to areas of your town that are, you know, underserved or not served? So they don't have cable access right now or broadband?
That is correct. But that build out has already happened. And we have an outstanding bill that came in maybe last spring, spring of 2021. That we have not yet paid. And for whatever reason, it didn't sit under CARES Act, I don't know. But anyway, it fits perfectly. That whole project fits perfectly under broadband. But anyway, we have a bill for it. It's already been completed.
Right.
And we just need to pay the bill. It's, I, I think we have 15K in an old ATM article that could go towards this. And I think it was around 95K, so we need about 80K.
I think it's 97 total.
97 total, so 82K.
Yep.
That is needed for that. And so my question is, does it fit under decreased revenue? And again, we don't know whether the decreased revenue is $5 or $500,000. We, we don't know. But, but it, it would come out of that 1.4 ARPA, you know, designation. So the question is, does it fit under decreased revenue? Even though it's already completed, can we pay for it under infrastructure? That's why it's in two places.
Okay.
And does it fit? Because it was already done before ARPA money even appeared in town.
Correct.
I think it depends on when it, when it actually occurred. If you could, and if it's in there, I'll find it myself. But if you could give, if not, if you could just get me the date when the actual work was completed. It's likely eligible.
Yeah, it was during COVID. It was during COVID that it was completed.
We'll see. You know, it's a question of whether it was before March 2021. So when you say spring, was it before March? Hopefully it wasn't.
March of 2020 or March of 2021?
2021. Are you saying it was done in 2020?
Yes.
I believe.
2020 and the bill came in, in.
February or before that, maybe.
First time I saw it was around March or April of last year.
Of 2020, so it, it's probably not, probably not eligible under ARPA. Because don't forget that didn't get signed.
Decreased, would it be eligible under decreased revenue if it's not eligible under infrastructure?
I still think you're going to run into an issue where the work is already completed. You know what I mean? So even though it was a pro, you know, if it was a project that you held off on doing and then you wanted, you know, ended up doing it in 2021, it would be covered. But I don't think you can fund something that was already done before the ARPA legislation was signed. I don't think. I'll double check. I mean, that's a little bit unique.
Yeah.
I'll look at it.
I, see if it's eligible under decreased revenue. Because it, it was required for kids to have online school.
Right.
And it's a good thing we had it in the works when all that happened so that they could complete it.
That's too bad that they didn't, that's too bad that they didn't cover that through CARES. I wonder why. Anyway, I'll, I'll look at it.
All right. Thank you.
And I have a question for you in regards to some of the human services things that we have. Mental health support. Is it? I'm also looking for sustainability on some of these things that, that we're, we're going for in regards to the mental health support. I know that I've been active with, with the chief in regards to getting social worker with the police force, also getting with the fire, especially EMS in regards to some of the calls that they're getting, especially with substance use issues that are within town. We're working with agencies to leave, leave behind bags that have information on, on support and overdose prevention and all of that kind of stuff. If we, if we had something and partnered with an organization, a mental health organization, the, I guess my, my, my comment is that we, we can use ARPA funds to initiate some of these, these programs. But then again, as far as sustainability is concerned, I think it's something, and maybe some of the other projects that we're doing too, we want to look at sustainability as well. Does that make them more qualified or less qualified in the ARPA world?
Not necessarily. I think you should take it into consideration when you're deciding on what you're going to fund, right? You should think about if it's a project that you want to continue, something like that, if you're going to be able to fund it, or if you have a plan to fund it two, three years from now. Mental health in particular is spelled out right in ARPA, so you have more leeway in terms of the long lasting effects of COVID versus just a purely medical call, you know, related to COVID symptoms. This, this long-term effects on mental health, both in children and people, and adults affected by the pandemic. I think you have a lot of leeway there in the ARPA language, because, you know, there is this kind of broad impact on everyone. And I think they recognize that you're, they're going, people are going to have that for years, for several years. So it's fairly simple to tie that back, the impacts of the last, you know, two years on everyone. But I think any of those, because, you know, any staff positions or any programs that you're going to implement, you should keep in the back of your mind, you know, what are you going to do when the ARPA funding is dried up? You know, if it's not a one-time project, like an infrastructure project, these other things that you want to do, you know, what's your plan to continue those in two, three years when the, when the funding's not there?
I think those are, oh, I have one more question. No, I guess it'll go into our conversation later when we talk about individual stuff.
Okay. Any more questions for Jennifer? Joe or Ross? I think that got all my questions to Jennifer, so. We'll be in touch.
You're welcome.
And we're gonna, we're gonna talk about our projects, but.
Okay. And I'll just let you know, I, I have a meeting with Terry this afternoon to look at the Vadar revenue report. So I'll start the revenue loss calculation for you this afternoon.
Okay, great, terrific.
Okay. All right.
We look forward to seeing that. Thank you for joining us this morning.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Nice to see you all.
All right. Do we want to talk about these projects now or do we want to take time and talk about them another time?
Um, yes, on both counts. I thought if we could just talk about a couple, because I have a couple of questions on, on a couple of these.
Okay. So the first page was an outline. Do you want to go through the outline or do you want to go through each page?
Well, I'm saying I have specific questions about, about the item itself. I'd like to be able to prioritize and then come back and talk about it in totality. But I'm saying that there's a couple of things that I want to get some clarification with, with, so that we're all on the same page.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah. So go ahead, start the discussion.
Well, I had, I had a lengthy conversation in regards to the fitness pad that we're, we're putting out there. Um, I have a couple of questions. There is a possibility that we can get a $50,000 state grant to help fund us with that. The state is coming back to the rec saying that the town needs to have, and I hate this term, but this was how it was reported to me, skin in the game. And it was reported back to them that we are not using any town funds to be able to do, to, to fund this particular project. It's going to be all, no taxpayer money is going to be involved in it. They asked if we would be, we, the town would be able to show them that we would be able to do something. I'm thinking we can incorporate the sidewalk, the.
Right, the support stuff. That's what I was thinking of.
Right.
For outdoor, the outdoor recreation piece.
Right. They're, they're looking at something as simple as the actual slab itself for the fitness center is $5,000. If we can get ARPA funds to, to pay for the, the slab.
And the walkway that's going to come to it, right?
Well, we're going, yeah, that all has to be incorporated.
At the back. So this is under number one, outdoor recreation. So this is, you know, like one, two, five pages in or so.
Yeah.
Outdoor recreations. Yes, page five. It's number one overhaul of the plot beyond town call alongside our fitness court. We'd like to see landscaping, accessorizing shade seating, sensing, parking, ADA accessibility. This would set the property up for future events such as a farmer's market, community yoga, gathering area for outdoor classes.
Correct.
And that's, that's one of the things that I like.
The, the, in order for that, them to be eligible for the $50,000 grant, the, the granting agency is saying that it has to be part of the fitness thing itself.
Okay, so let me ask the question. So you're saying like pay for the slab?
Yeah.
For that. Yeah, we could add that, but what grant are we talking about?
I can give you more of the information.
Yeah, I want to know the name.
Right, but the, yeah, I can give you all of that information. The, actually, we can have the rec director send that all to, to all three of us so that we have that.
That would be fine. We can add to this.
But yeah, what, what the question was to me is, would, would that be part of it? And I said I'd throw it out to the board. So we could make it part of it. My thought. I wanted to check with you.
A lot of this, and I couldn't, so we need a cost on this.
Yeah.
And a lot of it was in that first shared streets and spaces grant that we put in August, a year ago, that we did not get.
Correct.
And I couldn't, I looked for that all over the SharePoint and I could not find it. So let me put on my list to find the original shared streets and spaces grants. Because it had, it had dollars. And it, it was also, and it also included the fitness court.
Right.
If I remember correctly.
Right, for outdoor spaces, yes.
Right.
Yeah.
So let me look for that. And, and, and have the name of the grant. So two things on this. The name of the grant is being applied for and the, because this is one of the things I would like to look at. I would also like a building out back there for bike rental, perfect location for it. I like this spot because we can train cameras on.
Yep.
If you put bike rentals or canoe rentals down behind the farmer's exchange, there's not as easy a way to. To monitor. So, but if it's back here, it can be monitored.
Right.
So. Anyway, okay.
So I will talk with the director and get back to you on that.
Okay, that sounds good. Other things.
I see you have the COVID cleaning position under public safety.
Well, I, I think that we can fund that. That's, you can fund jobs that are supporting COVID. And I think that that's definitely one of the projects. And I had talked to Jennifer, I think, before, that the question was, could we backdate it to that position had been funded through CARES Act and CARES Act funding ends, has ended, end of October. So we have a couple months here where, but it's since March 2021. So if I understood what Jennifer said, we can make that a project and fund that position. Because I do think that position is important and we should continue to have.
So where is that? Who's funding that now? What, who's, who's that, the cleaner under? Who's he under?
It's under facilities and the funding for it though gets charged to CARES Act or did until the end of October. And right now it's probably coming out of facilities, but I don't know for sure.
It's coming out of facilities and we put it in the STM for additional funding. In case we didn't get it from CARES. If we get it from, if we get it from ARPA, we just don't spend it.
And that's fine. So let's, let's keep it special town meetings fine because we need that position.
Yes.
So, but I think that we can make it a project under ARPA, assign funds to it and backdate it because it's been since March 2021, which was when ARPA funding was signed into law.
Correct.
So I think we're good with that. And that is definitely one of the.
Can we take that position then as the board of selectmen?
Can we move it under board of?
Under board of selectmen?
I suppose we could.
So that, that particular cleaner guy, if it's going to be in the ARPA funds, we can have control of it better separate from facilities.
I don't know what we gain out of that. Facilities can handle it. It's just a case of who we charge is, is expenses to. Like, am I missing something in your question?
It's just in.
There is something in my question, but I don't want to question it yet, but it's just a matter of the accountant. I mean, if we had him on, him under us and we can control what's being done, how it's being done, when it's being done.
I would suggest we could do that now. If you're not happy the way it's been done, you let me know and I'll talk to facilities. Well.
But it's definitely something that we want funded under ARPA.
Yeah.
Yes.
I also, the mental health support, I think that's important. When the chief Sartell had put out the wellness initiative, I think that is a, I quit, put these all under. And so there's a wellness initiative that I think for public safety is good, whether it's fire, police, and then also the healthy childhood environments. There's a, for youth affected by, under the rec department, I would like, that's one of the things I like. There's a lot of these that I like. So I would also like to see a human services employee that has both, that has an employee focus and, but also a COVID focus to manage the programs that and the funding for mental health support to work with whoever the outside providers might be. And the outreach coordinator that was brought in here by the, suggested by council and aging. I would like that to be part of a human services almost department. Just a thought.
Well, I, I agree with you in that, in, we need to, we need to be very, we need to forecast when it comes to the mental health portion of it, because there's a lot that we're seeing now as far as increases in, in issues with mental health, which are going to bleed over into public safety. It's going to be also bleeding over the possibility of a lot of families losing money, losing their homes, that kind of stuff. So we have to be very, very open-minded when it comes to that. Having said that, I believe that especially with some of the ask for the Board of Health, I'd like to be really working with, in the Shoba Board of Health, who are working with several communities and they have a full staff of mental health professionals and medical professionals that would be able to, to help us put together what we are looking for in the human services, that human services position.
Yeah, so that could, could fit into the contact tracing that was.
Absolutely.
Um, that wasn't needed under the CARES Act. We had so side funds for that, but it wasn't needed because the state. Continue to do it, but it still could be needed. So that piece and anything else.
Well, I, uh, my thought is that if we had a human services employee, that employee would be an LMHC or an, or, or. LICSW would be a social worker or a mental health professional.
Right.
That would be able to work with the board of health on a professional level. Um, as opposed to our local board. Our local board can only do so much as far as, you know, what their, their purview is. But I believe that we need to have somebody, um, that is, uh, that would be able to provide clinical expertise to the town. For not only the, our, our employees, but, um, if they're seeing, um, things within the town itself that we need to focus on. And we need to put, put funding towards.
Okay. I will not. I disagree with that. And I, I see that. The human services person that you're talking about, and then underneath the community outreach position.
Yeah.
Which has also been, which has been part of the council on aging. I'd like to roll that in so that it's a more shared position, definitely council and agent, but a little bit of. You know, like the word defense, if a request comes in for that, to work with that and get that. You know, there is a policy on that, but to get that, who gets those requests?
Right. Now, I know the chief and I are working on the heels program with the, um, Boston Medical Center. Not only does it have a study, but there is other resourcing and outsourcing that they're doing. There's boots on the ground individuals that are dealing with certain areas of substance abuse and mental health. I just think it all needs to be incorporated together.
I agree. I do agree with that. So. Um, so can we move down to the community supports of these, these where it says mortgage rental support and eviction support? Because I see those, the mortgage and rental support, we handle through the affordable housing trust. Um, and we have to decide whether we're going to continue that. Or put it under this position that we're talking about. And then eviction support, what should I write about that? I, I'm not exactly sure how that works. Is that you contract with another agency to do that?
Well, the mortgage and rental support. It.
Who contracts with CMJ? I see that continuing is what I see.
Correct.
And I know that we did it through the affordable housing trust last year.
Yeah, so it's really like an MOU kind of deal. It's that they're doing all the work. They're, they're working, you know, they're agreeing to work with us sort of thing. So it's not, like, the housing trust isn't really actively doing anything with it. We're referring it to the third party.
Right, but that's who the contract was signed through.
Correct.
Last year.
Correct. Because, because they are a nonprofit. It's not a municipal entity. Right.
So I would want that to continue this.
So that could be.
We want everything.
Yeah, it sounds like one of just approval.
What I'm trying to do is to take these, a lot of these need to be clustered together and, and, and then. That, that can be divvied up accordingly. You know, we can say X amount of money for the, these particular things and let them. Um, deal with how they're going to split it up. But as far as the, the, did that make sense? It made sense to me.
No, no, it does make sense. We just, you and I might have different ideas. So we should write down our ideas, some sort of structured chart.
Exactly.
How this is going to work and what goes under.
Yeah.
You know, what, what employees are needed and what goes under what.
Correct.
And there needs to be an understanding that these funds are limited time period.
Right.
And so if we're going to continue it beyond 2026, we can plan out to 2026 with these funds.
Hmm.
They all have to be defined or by 2024 and expended by 2026.
Correct.
So.
So I just want to make sure that the ones that we can group together, we can group together and let them. Figure out how they're going to split the, the, the funding of it. Does that make sense?
You're going to make us a chat to look at.
No, I'm sure.
I.
I'm sure Madam Chair will.
Madam Chair is going to get that first.
Chair would like you to also make one.
Oh.
So that there is more than one thing to consider and Madam Chair is much dictating.
Yes. She's kind of PhD in, in algorithms.
All right, so, all right. Meals at the council on aging, that was a request I'll ask Karen to itemize that more.
Yeah.
That was a request to be able to have more of Donna's meals. As opposed to meals on wheels, not more of the in-house meals.
Yep.
Um.
And again, that can be part of the mental health portion of it.
It, it could fall under that.
Yeah.
Um, but I, I think that's important.
I believe that, that we need to allow the council on aging to be able to come up with more ideas of what they feel that they may need. Uh, I think that is an area that we definitely need to focus on.
Well, there's right behind.
Yes.
There are the ones that were.
Yep.
Um, so, okay. Outdoor spaces. So mine were the field behind town hall, and then I added the harbor sidewalk bike lane. And I put that in the sharepoint. I asked. So I asked John Walker, that's who then asked. Bill Ryder to provide what they have because I knew that they already have things in place. Including easements, et cetera, to do that. So I don't know what's going to come through the state program to them. Um, but if we could complete between what the state is going to provide. And what we can provide to ARPA, if we could complete that entire thing with this project with this, that would be one. So it, I'm thinking, I, I don't know what the funds have been and how much is going to come from the state. I know it costs them. I think over a hundred thousand to do this section. And then it's from there down to the harbor and then the harbor to the town hall.
Correct.
Um, and so we need to be looking at that, which can support the harbor piece of it. I think it would be good. So that's. When we do everything, I don't know, 2.8, no, you get spent really.
Really fast. And the water department's got over millions.
Yeah, the water department has a lot there. So we need to look at that.
And that's why it's very important. We just don't throw everything into one basket. We, you know, make it work for everybody.
I agree.
The Greenville Bridge Rock project, we really need to do that.
Put that back up to bid completely.
But the bid from last spring. Um, I, I just think there's other funds coming in. I want to use this if they aren't coming in. But if they, and if it fits under the project. Um, but if it doesn't. Been under the project, you are getting money, that is roads or. I hope we're getting money.
But as you said, Jess, that whole deal, put that thing up to bid before we even knew where the money was. That was just a waste of a whole bunch of time. That bridge. I concur. That was crazy. Why, why waste?
It, it does need done, you know?
Well, it needs to be done, but you got to at least make sure we have the money to do it. Why are you going to waste some company's? Time and effort to put all that effort into bidding that thing out, specking it all out, and then what? We ain't got the money anyway, sorry. It's just crazy.
So we had, um, there are some other asks here because I really kind of wanted to be fair to all departments. Again, on the fifth page cemetery and carts. Um, the old stairs at Adams Dam and Gazebo Restoration. It looks like Gazebo. Uh, restoration is likely to be funded. I, I don't know if we need to add more to that. But also this, the old stairs at Adams Dam, the ones below the trestle there. Um, we haven't really talked about it a lot, but there's another, um, Wild and Seen Grant that's opening. That's due in on February 1st. And our project, we asked for funds for the first phase. The second phase was to get a consultant to look at the erosion at those steps, they're falling apart. And the whole side is eroding into the river there. But we need a consultant to look at that and, and, uh. You know, determine what needs to be done.
Could this be a DLTA grant? I think you can't.
Not for conservation. Um, this is a, we need a. I, could be worth asking. But it could be a wild and scenic.
I'm just saying that the, the engineering and all of that kind of stuff. I'm not seeing actual work is that.
The, that's what I was going to suggest we go to Wild and Seen it for.
Okay.
For the engineering piece of it.
Okay.
And then use ARPA funds to fund the rebuilding.
Okay.
But I hadn't thought about DLTA because to me that's more traffic management, uh, planning. This is more a conservation thing. Um, the other place that we could go is mass trails, but we don't have an updated, um, open space and recreation play.
Right.
And you have to have that for a mass trail screen. And we don't have that.
Right, we're working on that.
So.
Um, as far as the, um, the BN stand, uh, you all voted for me to be, uh, working with them. I think right now they're going through figuring out how, what their next steps are. Uh, and a lot of it is, I think they have to be looking at more of, uh. They may have to find re-engineering and all of that kind of stuff. There's still, there, there's still a lot. But I do believe that we can leave, if, if we can leave some money on the table for that, just for now.
Okay. So those were the two cemetery and parks. The conservation and land use asks for, um. Funds for distribution of public education materials for the, the town's stormwater plan with the state, which has been kind of. On the back burner, hasn't really been implemented too well. Same with, um. They also asked for online permitting and digitizing existing records. And that was an ask of someone else. Um, the, the, uh. The police department asked for that. Uh, and it all kind of goes together.
It all, that's, that would be all part of, uh, of the broadband, I would, I would feel because it, we do, we should be. Looking at a major project to digitize all town departments.
Does that fit under that? Have you read the requirements for broadband under ARPA? Because I don't see digitizing records fitting.
No.
I see putting wire, you know, fiber cable or whatever been put out there. I see that. But I don't see digitizing records. But, you know, things can be read differently. I just didn't read it that way. All right, so we need to wrap up here.
Yeah, like a customers have to do.
Okay. So let's all come back and, uh, with ours in two weeks. December 6th.
Well, we have.
That's our next.
December 6th, yeah.
That's our next ARPA meeting. And, um, we'll get numbers and timelines. Okay, unwrapping up ARPA. Are we good?
Yeah.
All right. Moving on to 5.2, vote to accept the grant in the amount of $9,600 for the recycling dividends program. Through the Sustainable Materials Recovery Program and authorize town administration to sign contracts.
So move second.
All this in favor?
Joe Shank, yes.
Jess Sexton, Iranian, yes.
Next one. All right, this is holidays. Holidays, holidays, holidays. So I put a bunch of holiday stuff in there. And for me, um, the piece that's really, um, I, I think that what is proposed here in this memorandum. Is perfectly fine. Um, what, it, it doesn't necessarily work. Uh, with personnel policies and procedures.
What is the memorandum?
Um. I thought you put this in. We'll send this down to Ross.
So we all.
I thought that you had asked Carolyn to create that.
I probably did, but.
Your name's on it.
It must be good work, though.
It adds Juneteenth. And so I quit and Juneteenth is now a federal holiday as well as a state holiday. And I had quit it, I had, you saw my emails back and forth from last June where I had asked about this. Because we did not ever discuss it as a board last year. And then it was, you know. Juneteenth was coming up. And so I asked about what other towns were doing. The thing is, Juneteenth was a Saturday last year and Saturday holidays, according to the Secretary of State's office. Are, um, celebrated on Saturdays, not a Friday and not a Monday. Seriously, it's in the Secretary of State memo I put in the sharepoint. If it is a Sunday holiday, it's, it's celebrated on Monday. But if it's a Saturday holiday, it's, um, celebrated on Saturday. And that's why it wasn't an issue this past summer.
And that is just referring to Joe Taints.
Um, last summer, that's what it was referring to, but in general, it is the case. So in, um, in other words, if you have Christmas on a Saturday, which we have this year. You don't have to give the holiday. Um, but.
Unless you're in a contract, so it's to the.
Exactly.
The opposite.
That, yes, that's exactly right. So we have all these conflicting, and I'm not saying I'm all for holidays. I'm just, I'm not, there is just conflicting stuff amongst the union contracts. Versus the personnel policies and procedures and, and personal services contracts. So we all, it, it all sort of doesn't, doesn't mesh nicely as it should. So that needs to be looked at. Um, so under holidays, so the personnel policies and procedures now have that in front of me anymore. Um, full-time employees get New Year's Day, which, which we're doing on the, on New Year's Eve this year. So New, New Year's Eve, um, because it's a 2022 holiday. We can give it on New Year's Eve or we can. Uh, Patriots' Day, Labor Day, Thanksgiving Day, Martin Luther King Day, Memorial Day, Columbus Day, Christmas Day. President's Day, Independence Day and Veterans Day. But the day after Thanksgiving is not a holiday. According to the personnel policies and procedures. If you go to ask me, and I just put in the supervisors' union because I'm pretty sure they're all the same. In the supervisors' union, the day after Thanksgiving is a holiday. If you're a part-time employee.
And the, and the same for, uh, clerical union.
Yes.
Plus they get the half day before Thanksgiving.
Yes, they get Wednesday afternoon off.
That answers my question. I guess for closing town hall, noon time is, is what's there.
Um, for, well, for those employees. But the other employees would be required to work. In other words, the selectmen's office would be open. Um, so. Uh, we need to consolidate our union schedules and the Juneteenth. And, um, what I was told by council last summer, this was in June, mid-June, was that all of these things can be used as. Organizations. Maybe I'm not supposed to say that in open session. But it's, I just think we need to make a concerted effort to consolidate our holidays. Because right now it's a little nuts up. So people that didn't work on Veterans Day, you don't get veteran, who don't get the Friday after Thanksgiving. Those people either need to take a vacation day, a personal day, or to cover the day after Thanksgiving. But if you're union, you don't have to do that. Um, in any event, and then there's the part-time employees, which we have a ton of. Part-time employees get only New Year's Day, Independence Day, Thanksgiving Day, Memorial Day, Labor Day and Christmas Day. As well as fractional employees as defined in Article 1. So we have, it's. So it's a solution.
Whatever this is, but this, if we do, this says this is all approved today. So how is that written on there? It's food by the border segment today.
Well, yeah, good question. I mean, we hadn't even talked about this.
We hadn't even talked about.
So what I would like to do.
Well, this was anticipating it to be voted and you can change it.
Um, what I would like to do is vote the holiday schedule, uh, total holiday schedule at the beginning of January. But today, vote just New Year's Eve. But today, vote just New Year's Eve, Christmas Eve. Town hall will be open on Wednesday unless you're under a union contract where you get to leave at noon. And I don't think it's everybody, I think it's maybe the clerical union, I'm not so sure.
Just the clerical union that gets the half day for Thanksgiving.
Right, supervisors' union does not get that. They are all, it's, it's, it's totally inconsistent. And there's too many different unions, too many different, I mean, you shouldn't have five different policies for holidays. It should be the same across the board, um, as far as I'm concerned.
Well. Yes, that's the right overall statement. Then you've got public safety, like police and fire.
There's.
Essentially work 24 hours, seven days a week.
Yeah.
And we have to be careful which days become as holidays because then that falls into double time and.
Yes, and all that, two and a half times. If you're working a holiday, you also get time and a half. So it's, uh.
So. Police department is off for Christmas and New Years. And if they're working that day, then it's.
The day off, not Christmas Eve or New Year's Eve. So to, to make a statement like what's there in that memorandum is not exactly right.
Correct.
And opens us up for grievances.
Water department, they get Christmas and New Years, or if it's a Saturday, or, or it's a weekend, the nearest working day. So that would suggest they get Christmas Eve off and New Year's Eve off.
Yeah.
As their Christmas and New Year's holiday.
I personally think that everybody should get Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve off. I do, at least the half day.
Supervisors are in the same situation. So they would get Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve off as their Christmas and New Year's holiday. The clerical staff gets a half day already on Christmas Eve. Plus Christmas Day, but it says the nearest working day. So they get half day on Thursday as their New Year's Eve half day, and then a full day on Friday as their Christmas Day.
Say that again?
They get a day and a half off.
Who does?
They get a half a day for Christmas Eve, I'm talking about the clerical union, and they get Christmas Day. But it says if it's on the weekend, it's celebrated on the nearest working day, which would have been Friday, which would have been, which is Christmas Eve.
Yeah, that's a problem. So they get.
Thursday afternoon off as Christmas Eve and Friday off as Christmas Day.
Okay.
Then they have Christmas on, real Christmas on Saturday.
Right. So, so what I'm saying is, we can't publish a memo like this and be clear on it. We can't for 2022 if we bargained everything and made it consistent.
Just, I'm gonna, my argument again, we have this out here, it's in front of us, we're discussing it. But where did this come from?
Carolyn put it in the SharePoint, I thought it came from Ross.
No, I asked her to put it on the agenda item. And she went step ahead to try to put dates down, which I think is fine, but it's.
It isn't fine because it could jam us up.
Well, it turns out there's some adjustments, but I think putting it down in black and white gives you something to discuss and look at. So Joe, I don't think there's anything wrong in having a stab at what one person feels the holidays could be.
Okay, so these are 2022 holidays. Let's talk about New Year's Eve.
Want to back up to Christmas this year?
I think that what we need to decide on today is what we're doing this year. That's what I think we need to decide on. I think that this holiday schedule, with the exception of New Year's Day, we can hold off until the first meeting in January, which is like January 4th, to figure out our holidays, does that make sense? So in other words, we're looking at 2021, this memorandum is for 2022. And the only thing that falls into, um, oh, we observed Friday, December 31st.
I think what she means is.
This is a mistake.
Yes, it should be Fri-, what she's proposing is Friday, December 31st, 2021.
But New Year's Day is on a Sunday, so it should next, no, this year, yeah, you're right, it's on a Saturday. So it should be 2021 there, that's an error.
Yeah, okay.
Alright, so.
And technically, the next New Year's Eve is 23, isn't 23, so we'll cross that bridge when we get to it for that.
Correct, okay. So talking about New Year's Eve and New Year's Day, though the Christmas Eve Day and the New Year's Eve Day for this year, okay, are only for rich employees. This is way more complicated than one.
It is.
Clerical.
Police and Fire are.
Are on the day off.
On the day off.
And.
Now, what if they don't work Christmas Day or New Year's Day?
Is that addressed in the contract?
It certainly is addressed if they do work.
And if they don't work, do they get the holiday?
Well, I'm sure we would have to pay them holidays sooner or later.
It's a problem is, it's just, it's been for so many years inconsistency that it just.
Really, it's only been the past like four or five years, since the unions, um, since more employees became unionized other than police and fire.
The worst thing the town ever did is unionize all these unions.
Well, usually it's not something the town can decide.
Oh, no, we're not, we can't, it's up to the employees to go for it.
Okay, so who gets what for Thanksgiving? I think that if you're not a union employee, the Fri-, we're closed the Friday after Thanksgiving coming up. And if you're not a union employee who has that day off, then you either take, sit, um, personal day, vacation day, or leave without pay. We already decided that, we already voted on that.
If that would be their normal workday, I don't think we can say town halls close.
They could come in.
They shouldn't be shorting them pay because of that, because we decide to close the building.
We've closed the building, but just like we voted to close on Friday, employees would want them to come and work if they sent choose.
Or stay, or stay home and not get paid, or take.
Take vacation, right, or personal day or whatever, if they're not covered by the union. Um, most of the people are union employees and they get that day off, correct?
Really want to bother having one or two people come in on Friday?
Not my rule, I mean, I didn't.
We didn't make these rules.
Well, yeah, good. Nobody's gonna object to you saying, we'll pay this as a holiday. We're supposed to work on Friday.
I thought we already voted this, I put out a memo on this, like beginning of November. And we already voted that. But like, uh, you know, the half days on Wednesday, that's clerical. So we have clerical union who can go home half day, supervisors' union has to stay.
Yes.
And anybody who is not in a union.
Unless we decide that Friday, the building is closed and it's a half day for everybody.
Okay, so complaint, double send.
But then how's that work with like the police department and the rest of them? Then, should I'm saying?
That's, that, we had a grievance about that.
Yeah. That's the problem you're gonna run yourself into, because, well, why didn't we get paid?
Right, and we got a grievance because the town administrator closed the building on Christmas Eve and said everybody gets a holiday, it was never voted by the Board of Selectmen. So the police grieved it.
They win that? I mean, often I think you're allowed to close one group and honestly close all the other groups.
So they did not win because it had never been brought before the Board of Selectmen. That is why they did not win. There was not a Board of Selectmen vote. So I will not vote to, as much as I think it's the right thing to do. I can see the line of people coming in saying, you're costing the taxpayers money. You voted to close the building and we're paying them, and we should not be paying them because we're the taxpayers. And you don't have any interest in the taxpayers, and that's not the case. We have interest in the taxpayers and the employees. So where I think it would be very nice for the employees to say, yes, we have all these disparate, separate agreements about things, and I think we have to honor those agreements so that we don't do a nice thing, which was closing on Christmas Eve, telling everybody to go home without a Board of Selectmen thing, and then getting a grievance, saying, well, you owe us, you know, um, you know, for that, and we will, that will happen. And I only know that because of experience, I never would have thought that otherwise.
Yep, well, this is a reason in the future to adjust these contracts because we might close town hall on a snow day. It counts, people get paid for, as we close the building, but we're not closing police and fire.
Right.
On a snow day, I'll be not closing highway on a snow day.
No.
No.
Goodness, no.
So all this needs spelled out for 2022. Meanwhile, okay, so we have this week, you, you go by your contract for November and you go by your contract for December.
Wednesday afternoon, some will have to work a full day on Wednesday.
That is correct. Sad as it may be, that is correct.
And some will have to, some will get, Friday is the holiday this week and.
And some will either have to take a vacation day or a personal day or leave without pay.
But we're not closing the building, so we're not stopping someone from working.
Everybody has a keep on.
Yeah, I mean, we're not.
If they wanna come in and work, it's quiet time, I mean, we voted for the Friday afternoons after Thanksgiving, starting in December. So although I did just hear Kathy say that the town clerk would be open on that first Friday from 9:00 AM to 8:00 PM or something for a voter registration on the 3rd of December. But in any event, um, and for Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, how do we do those? Because they, they say they're, uh, so this was my question. Christmas Eve and Christmas Day are holidays. And if you go to what's in SharePoint for the, um, mass state holidays from the Secretaries of State, in 2021, uh, New Year's, New, okay, never mind, New Year's Day in 2022, January 1st is the holiday. So why are we giving New Year's Eve off? The contracts say they get New Year's Day off. And the Secretary of State says New Year's Day, Massachusetts legal holiday, is Saturday, January 1st.
The union contract says if your holiday falls on a non-working day, it would be the nearest working day.
Okay, so for union people, they get New Year's Eve off for New Year's Day. But for people that are personal services, they do not.
It's crazy.
It is craziness.
It is crazy, it is absolutely crazy. Is there a way we can, well, I think we have to renegotiate all of contracts, but can we standardize all holidays across the board somehow?
Yeah, I mean, the goal, that can be a goal, I agree. That's, that can be a goal of the selectmen to, to make sure of it, but we're gonna have to go through the, we're gonna have to go through the bargaining.
And the same deal is for Christmas Day because it's on a Saturday. And by state law, the day that gets celebrated is a Saturday. It.
I respectfully suggest probably the fine print is per state law, unless otherwise stated in the union contract.
That would be true.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So I think we have to go by the union contract.
Oh, I absolutely think they have to go by the union contracts, but not everybody is under a union contract. I don't know why it's the way it is, but it is the way it is. And, uh, I think it needs to be rectified. I like the list of holidays, but it's not feasible the way universe, the way the union contracts are. And the personnel policies. So are we good?
I don't need it.
Me neither, but. Let's not, let's not throw a can of worms at us or anybody, I mean, what have we been doing?
I don't wanna take any bets.
I, I don't.
I don't.
Tell everybody to figure out for themselves.
No, go see Ross.
Go have the five contracts lined up.
Read your contract.
In lieu of the situation that has been placed upon us, which because of past experiences, I believe we should do the right thing and just make a, make a statement on what the holiday is gonna be for now, and then we'll, we'll tackle that in January for the, the next coming year.
I won't do it for New Year's Eve or New Years, for New Year's Eve or Christmas Eve because of the grievance that we got last year.
No, we didn't get the grievance.
I'm okay with stating you follow per your union contract.
Right.
And if the holiday falls on Saturday, unless it's specified otherwise, it is the Saturday.
I just think we have to follow contracts, whatever the contracts are, that's what they are.
And.
They're the ones that want contracts, they're the ones that made us sign into it, they negotiated it, there it is, there's your contract.
And I am, the holiday schedule that's there, with the exception of New Year's Day, is fine for 2022.
I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about just, just for.
For now, that's what your union contract says.
So then that's what we need to, to, to say that whatever the union contract says.
And non-union.
And non-union is whatever the non-union says.
Whatever the policies, policies and procedures.
Unless it says, um, and I don't think it does, uh, which is kinda terrible. But I, I am afraid to change it otherwise because we will get grievances.
So non-union has to work Friday this week. No half day on Wednesday.
Correct. And unless they take, you know, yeah, if they normally work on a Friday, they work on Friday.
According to policies and procedures for non-union, whenever any of the above-named holidays fall on a Saturday or Sunday, the preceding Friday, in the case of a Saturday holiday, and the following Monday, in the case of a Sunday holiday, shall be recognized as the holiday for the purpose of time off.
Okay, so that takes care of Christmas Eve and New Year's Eve.
Correct.
Okay, good, good, good.
But for Thanksgiving, non-union folks are full day Wednesday and full day Friday. Yep. If they normally work. Correct.
I am.
Non-union, it's, it's off, um, or the nearest working day, right? Correct.
Okay, we need to wrap up.
Yes, we have a.
Review and, alright, a good, approve the holiday, which we did.
No, we did not, we talked about Christmas and New Year's Eve holiday hours for 2021. And we will approve the 2022 holiday list on January 4th. We just passed the thing, but.
January 1st. January 1st will be celebrated, probably on Friday, New Year's Eve of this year.
Or I, I don't wanna take any bets, just follow your contracts.
Right.
As we put ourselves in a bind.
Well, I was gonna ask you about letting people go home early on Wednesday, but I've answered that question, or so, some yeses, some no's.
The other ones don't wanna argue for the union stuff, this is, there's your contract, read it.
Next meeting is Monday, December 6th at 9:00 a.m., that is ARPA. And I think I put something else on there, if you look in the SharePoint, you'll see, uh, December 7th at 6:00 p.m. and December 14th, special town meeting at 7:00 p.m., and that's what we have scheduled at this point.
Just one other topic.
Yes.
The COVID cases in Townsend has spiked, I think you saw that note over the weekend.
Yeah.
It's gone from low twenties to high thirties, it's back up to where it was when we implemented the mask policy. Um, and the number of positive cases, of, of positive test results, it's like 4.4%. So it's going up high as well.
I thought it was 6.6%.
Yes, you're right. So the Board of Health is meeting tonight to discuss.
Mandate mask.
I'm expecting we're gonna recommend a mask policy be re-implemented. Now, the one that we just removed last week. Is it okay with the board if I just send a note out tomorrow mornings implementing whatever we think their, whatever their policy is, or whatever their recommendation is?
All right, if, if it is for a mask mandate, yes.
I support a mask mandate.
Yeah.
I'm just gonna say that, I support a mask mandate.
If they're gonna recommend that, then yes, if they're not, then I believe we need to discuss it.
So in the past, I believe the board has sort of deferred to the Board of Health to decide what the appropriate COVID policy should be.
I think we should add a discussion to the December 7th evening as to where we to reconsider deferment. Or to discuss further that decision that was made by a board before us. That was made by a board that none of us were on.
Okay, I mean, certainly making an agenda item, um, I think there's some advantages to having the Board of Health make the recommendation. One, they should be closer to the topic than the four of us. Two, it could happen quicker than waiting for the next select board meeting, or 48, or even two days later, to schedule and do what they've said to do.
But I think the Board of Health has to be just, they, they have to make that decision, come to us, they have frontline with the Shoba Board of Health, they know what's going on, they're in contact with the fire, police department.
So I guess I would want, I don't think that vote was made with the Shoba Board of Health present or consulting. Um, and so I would want them.
I believe Rick was part of the discussion. Well, they're voting tonight.
Yes, they are.
So.
Yeah.
So if, what, as I expect, will be to re-implement the mask policy, it's okay if I send that notice to everybody.
I'm good with that.
If they come up with something very different, I will touch base with you.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
But I think the fastest way to implement these is for the town administrator to send out, just the Board of Health, as I said. Taking the mask off, you can wait on that policy. Putting the mask on, I think should happen quickly.
Yeah.
Okay.
So do we need a motion for that? Or can we just say?
It wasn't an agenda item, but I'm just asking direction so that I work in lockstep with what you're, you want.
Just handle it.
I, I wanna make sure that the Shoba Board of Health is part of this decision.
Yeah. Not just two or three people, we need to know what the Shoba, the region's doing.
Yes, understand that it could be differently implemented each town.
Right.
But it ought to be with introduction to the Shoba Water.
That is correct.
Their recommendation.
With their recommendation.
Their recommendation for Townsend.
Correct. All right, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
I move that we adjourn at 12:10.
Second.
All those in favor?
Joe Shanks, yes.
Just ex-Turanian, Turanian, yes.
All right, thank you very much.
Everybody have a happy Thanksgiving.
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving, everybody.